Good evening. The following presentation is ceremonial only. The actual Troy City Council meeting of July 23, 2012 will begin once I retake the chair. Please let me introduce to you the Honorable Matthew Profky, our 4th Mayor for a Day essay contest winner. Join me, Matthew? Mrs. Profky? Good evening.
Hello. My name is Matthew Profky and I am your mayor for a day. I would like first to read my essay which begins with the words, "Citizen Participation Is Important in Government Because..." Citizen participation in government is important because, without the people, one person alone gets to control everything. The power is in the people's hands. Without citizen participation, we have fought a war for nothing. If we don't vote, we might not like what the top person picks. I would like to welcome Pastor Simeon Timbuck from the Bethesda Romanian Church, who will give the invocation which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in standing.
Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, and it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the day our daily bread; forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from the evil one. Do us the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Bless this meeting tonight, Lord; bless the councilmen, the councilwomen; bless the people who speak tonight to speak the truth in love. Bless our city; bless our country to be a kind and loving and forgiving people. I ask you for those who are hurt to be healed, and those who are mourned in Aurora, Colorado, to comfort them. We ask you in Jesus' name, amen.
I am a faithful agent to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. The July 23 meeting of the Troy City Council is now called to order.
When we gave the city tour to Matthew and his family, his little brother Blaine, who's with us in the audience, watched his practice presentation and said, "I want to bang the gavel." And so I said to him, "He's going to have to write an essay for a future mayor for a day essay contest," and you should have seen his eyes light up. Can you join me in thanking Matthew for his performance? The July 23, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Will you call me, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Would someone like to pass a resolution to excuse Councilman Teetz? Quorum is present.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yes.
I did speak with him earlier today. He was planning on being here. I don't know if something has happened since that time, but perhaps that matter can be weighed, perhaps you could wait a little bit.
Hold off on that a little bit. Okay, quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is an update from the Troy Chamber of Commerce on the expense funding model for the Troy Transit Center. Please welcome Mrs. Hodges. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels. You've got some competition there, geez. You did a great job. It's nice to see you all this evening. Councilman Fleming, it was great to run into you. And Mrs. Fleming, last night at the Henry Ford, I'm glad, well, we survived. You did not survive the Titanic sinking, so my apologies. But again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Before saying a word, I think it's really about what I'm actually here to talk to you about tonight. I think it's important to maybe say something important that must be said, and it has to do with what will never change, what will never change about Troy. Troy is an exceptional community. It is notable for so many reasons. It's impressive, and perhaps even stately, that word applies here today. And I'm a firm believer that that will never change. It's been that way for a long time, and it's going to continue to be that way for a long time. And we're very glad, as your Chamber of Commerce, to be part of this community. We can't forget that no matter what, and working together in a purposeful, deliberate, and enthusiastic fashion will make sure, certain that we sustain those assets that make Troy what it is today. Working together, we say, deliberately, purposefully, with enthusiasm, that is what is happening today, as we seek to identify a business model to sustain the operating expenses at the Troy Transit Center, actually Troy Birmingham Transit Center. And because of its propensity to reduce the impact on the Troy taxpayer, I think it's a quintessential example of the common ground that we're all seeking as we do work together. Keep in mind that by reducing this impact, not only do we keep money in the pockets of Troy residents, but we also alleviate the tremendous budgeting pressure, I'm sure Mr. Culpepper can attest to, that is caused by the reduction in property values as well as the impacts of the Headley Amendment. It's a start, albeit a small one, but it's scalable once we master it, and we think too that it will keep Troy great. It'll keep Troy great because it will continue that tradition of leadership, problem solving, and solution identification that has got us where we are today. We're excited and challenged by it, and I'm glad to be here tonight to share our progress with you. You're already aware, I think, that we await confirmation from Amtrak stating that it will cover 100% of the operating costs at the center. Certainly, this is exceptional news that we're very pleased with. In fact, someone last week suggested to me, "Well, why don't we push them further? Why don't we profit off of Amtrak?" And it's my assertion that we already are, because this is a paradigm change. In the past, we would have been encumbered with this expense. So it's excellent that Amtrak is at the table. It also opens the door, it's a starting point for point for future negotiations, once the current contract expires. So profit, no, not in the traditional sense, but certainly a meaningful addition to the budget. Mission accomplished? I suppose you could say yes. In many ways, that does accomplish the mission, because the operating costs are covered, correct? But we feel no. We do not feel that that was the intention of our pledge when we came to you in January and provided a pledge that we would find a way of covering those operating expenses. Good evening, Councilman Teetz. So we intend to continue this process and fulfill what we intended, which was an overall model that would apply to more than just one provider and perhaps many more that can continue to sustain this facility over the long term and perhaps provide even additional funds to be pushed back into it. So we continue to march forward with two parallel teams that intersect as appropriate. The first team is one of high-level, private sector representatives. They bring insight and wisdom to the table, they're engaged, and they're committed to our success, and they include many names that you're familiar with, such as Meritor, Magna, and Walsh. They've committed some of their highest-level staff to this process, which we're very encouraged by. The second team that's been created is an essential group of experts, because keep in mind, when the chamber committed to do this, we really weren't empowered or enabled to do so, in that we cannot negotiate contracts on behalf of the city, we can't administer the bid process. Those sorts of administrative things are not enabled to us. So if we did not have a team of city staff experts to be working with, we would essentially be rendered ineffective. So interim city manager Culpepper has been very supportive in this process and has assisted in forming a team of city experts and include representation from the economic development team, purchasing, engineering, signage, and others as needed. We've been working together to develop a list of possibilities and opportunities that we're now actively evaluating and pursuing. And some examples of those things include naming rights, and most of these will be obvious to you, signage, sponsorship of virtually any element. Perhaps we decide to put some battery charging stations in there or try to bring back some of the green elements, seating areas, kiosks, et cetera, could be sponsored, food trucks, public art, vending machines, technology, all things that would hopefully, would absolutely fit in with the consent judgment and its provisions, different shuttles, limos, zip cars, et cetera. Everything's on the table at the moment, and we'll see what solidifies and makes sense and fits the mission and purpose of the city's values. I'd also like to take a minute to whet your appetite as to some of the more dynamic opportunities that we've been pursuing. We see this not only as a functional node within an overall transportation system, but also an opportunity for some place-making, which is a buzzword in the planning community the last few years, and it's what communities that are committed to being competitive in the 21st century are going to be focusing on. So to that end, we've been reaching out to experts in that realm, Wayne State University, Michigan Municipal League, and others, and we're seeking best practices from around the globe. So things like digitally represented shopping opportunities with home delivery, perhaps dance steps in the pavement, I can see you out there, Mayor Daniels. So fun things like that, that also provide some entertainment, and again, make it that place that will cause people to go there and hopefully advance to the importance of what the various transit options are that are available there. Tops on my list within that is related to vending machines, and why the heck should we settle for just a vending machine when maybe we could hearken back to our history as a region and have an automat there? And lo and behold, we did a little bit of research and we found out that Edward Hopper, an artist that's probably familiar to many of you, has actually featured automats in some of his artworks. So from that, we've reached out to both the DIA and the Henry Ford to see if, in fact, they'd be interested in exploring these sorts of unique partnerships and place-making opportunities, and so far, they are both interested in talking. So we're at the table. Will it work? I don't know. Do we need to try? You betcha. And if we have our way, it will work, and I think we have strong enough relationships in our community to certainly exhaust every opportunity that is out there. So hopefully, the message to you is that we don't want to leave anything at the table. We're not just going to go for the low-hanging fruit and call it quits. We're going to see this through, we're going to continue to look for that overall business model, because I think not only does the Transit Center need it, but I think your community, including your business community, needs those opportunities to be able to tell those folks that are getting off those trains and getting off those buses where they can go to eat, where they can go to put their head on a pillow, where they can find a rental car. So those are the types of opportunities we're making sure are there. So in summary, and too, I should say too, there are so many smart people in Troy, so many high-level executives that have great insights and wisdom, and any thoughts that folks have out there, this is the time to share them, and we would love to have that, because in conclusion, it's important to note that we are in a transformation, and we do have a chance to transform the model as to how we advance this sort of infrastructure. So, and we're also looking to find that common ground that I think we all need, and we're really excited about creating an important place that Troy can be proud of. So with your continued support, we will get there. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. I'm sure my colleagues are here as well and would be happily, happy to help me in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councilman Fleming?
Thank you, Cheryl, for that excellent report. As we were talking just before the meeting started, you shared a few companies, Meritor, Magna, and Walsh, and there are probably others. I'd be interested to know if there are others that are involved in this team, One, as you called it. Also, we anticipate, you know, the operating costs being covered by Amtrak. But I would be interested to see revenue generated by your team One in addition to that, and that revenue possibly put into an account that we could accumulate funds for future improvements, just in case the operating costs were not covered, we'd have that as a contingency, and possibly some capital in the future. So maybe we can consider that, because I think we'll be successful in getting Amtrak to cover the operating costs, but it would be great to have the business community, and I know you're, you're committed to doing that, generate additional revenues just for capital improvements or whatever the needs may be in the future. So I'm excited about it.
I'm really glad you didn't really die on the Titanic, because you're right on target. That's been our stretch goal from the very beginning, is to not only support the operating expenses, but to hopefully perhaps even create that fund that you speak of that could allow, because the site can accommodate additional build-out in there as well. In fact, the chamber itself would like to have its offices there at some time, at some point. We would have liked to have done that now, but the design timing and needs and that, the timeline just won't allow for that. But perhaps down the road, that's something that can happen. I know that's another revenue generator for the community, but there are things like that that could happen that would really support and sustain the center for the long term.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Well, I was just going to say thank you as well for coming to give us the update, and you captured a lot of the points that I wanted to make sure I conveyed to you so that we were on the same page. We're all very happy to hear that Amtrak is hopefully onboard. I know it's not a dunded deal, but I'm very positive showing that that's going to be available to us. But I'm very excited to hear that you're not just seeking the low-hanging fruit, and I didn't think that you would be, nor with the rest of the team that's involved. But this is very exciting, listening to the ideas that you have, and hopefully you will come back to us as a council and the community here at the meetings and through whatever ways you think would be most effective, so we can get the updates and kind of see what the progress will be on some of these, so we can start making sure that the community is aware of all the exciting things that they have to look forward to.
I think you'd be very pleased to see the energy on the team. In fact, our city manager comes back with all sorts of notes from his travels. He's, you know, taking this very seriously, as are others. It's not just a job for everybody that's involved, it's a passion.
Of course. Councilman Slater?
Well, they've said everything that I wanted to say. We've talked about this for a long time, and it's great to see it come this far. But thanks to you, Michelle, and I see John Tagle out there in the audience, and thanks to John also.
He's wearing shorts, so he'd be up there here with me, I think.
It's probably best if he's sitting down then. But thanks to you and the team and to the staff. And when we talked about this about a month or so ago, we asked to have monthly reports. I think I would still like to see that, and this is a great first report, but if we could get one monthly, that'd be great, I think, for the community to hear how we're progressing, because we do have a date fairly close, unless we get an extension. So I would appreciate kind of a monthly.
Yes, I concur with you, and that was the intent all along. We did, it was difficult in the beginning for the reasons I stated earlier that we really weren't empowered to do. So now that we have that infrastructure in place, that management, I see it as a management tool, we're much more effective at moving it forward, and we'll be able to come to you with more substance more regularly.
Thanks.
Councilman Henderson?
Thanks for the information. I just have two small questions. I know I'm older than you. What is an automat?
You know, you need to Google it, because it's this fantastic, it surprised me how many folks haven't heard of it, but it's this fantastic, it was really the beginning of the vending machine, and there was a, I should have brought my little sheet, but back in New York is where it started, and I think the original franchise was Harp and Hooker or something like that. And there were a couple of different versions. One, essentially, you know, what you would expect in a vending machine, except it was one of the ones that would heat your food up, you could get a hot cup of coffee, a hot sandwich. And there were also, there was also a version where you could actually go in and dine and seat, sit right there once you got your food out of the machine. But Frank Sinatra, I think, sings about it? Come on, Dave. Or Councilman Henderson, I should say. I'll bet the minute you see it, you're going to recognize it, and especially if I do, so.
The follow-up question to that is, I noticed in the very first sentence of the report that you'd given us, it's now, in fact, you corrected yourself, it's now the Troy Birmingham Transit Center. Is that, is it, to change? Has it been that all the time? Even though they backed out of the program?
Well, I don't know that a decision was ever made officially either way, but we've discussed it as a group, and it's certainly something the chamber would champion for a number of reasons. One, I don't think we'd be where we are if we didn't have the support of Birmingham hitherto. Two, it sets the stage for the future, hoping that, you know, the best-case scenario is that at some point Birmingham connects to the center. So it might be in 10 days, it might be in 10 years. We want to set the stage for that. Two, if the customer is our grounding thought, we want to be as informative as we can to that customer, so when they land, if they know they're coming to the Troy Birmingham Transit Center, they have a better idea geographically where they're landing. It's more, so it's more informational from that standpoint. And we also think Birmingham is an outstanding brand, that it makes sense for Troy to be parallel with. It helps boost our brand as well from a marketing standpoint. So those are some of the quick, off-the-cuff rationales for going in that direction. We just think it's good business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no carryover items. There is a public hearing regarding an amendment to a zoning ordinance permitting financial institutions' drive-through uses within the Big Beaver District by special use approval. Brent? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I can make a brief presentation if you'd like.
Please.
I'll be brief. The city of Troy adopted a comprehensively rewritten zoning ordinance in April of 2011. Many of you will remember, it was a landmark event for the city of Troy. Under the new zoning ordinance, drive-through uses are not permitted within the Big Beaver zoning district. The reason for prohibiting drive-throughs along Big Beaver was to achieve the goals of the Big Beaver corridor study. Now, a couple of those goals are achieving a stronger relationship between the building and the street, and also creating a more walkable corridor, making it more of a dynamic people place. It was felt that by prohibiting drive-throughs, that would help to get there. However, since that, since the ordinance was created, the planning department has received inquiries from a number of banks, excuse me, requesting a drive-through presence along Big Beaver. In addition, there are eight existing bank branches with drive-through windows that are currently operating on the Big Beaver corridor, and these drive-throughs are considered legal non-conforming, which means they can continue to operate, but they cannot expand. So the Planning Commission considered this issue and worked on this proposed text amendment, and the language permits drive-throughs as accessory to financial institutions in the Big Beaver District by special use approval. It eliminates the non-conforming status of the eight existing banks that are currently on Big Beaver, and finally, and perhaps most importantly, it would encourage reinvestment by allowing banks that currently do not have drive-through windows to actually add a drive-through presence along the Big Beaver corridor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on June 12, 2012, recommended approval of the proposed text amendment, and city management agrees with the Planning Commission further, and also recommends approval of the proposed text amendment. And I would remind Madam Mayor that this is a public hearing, and probably possibly people behind me that want to speak.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from council? Well, I noticed that there was a provision that said that there couldn't be entrances or exits off of Big Beaver, and so I'm wondering how many banks this is going to actually help in their expansion?
Yeah, the provision actually prohibits the direct connection off of Big Beaver. So what that means is, is cars could not, could not turn into the, into the, into the bank property and immediately queue, or go around the bank and, and line up and immediately exit. They'd have to either go in front, they'd have to go in front of the bank. The intent of that is not have, if you allow the, well, first of all, the, the window needs to be at the back of the bank. That's, that's one thing. But we didn't want the, the issue of queuing immediately onto Big Beaver, and we wanted to really soften the impact of the automobile. So it's, it's, it's not prohibiting access to Big Beaver, it's direct, a direct connection to Big Beaver. If that makes sense.
Well, it's a good answer. Well, thank you, and you can be seated. Thank you. This public hearing is now open. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue, if you could announce your name, please.
Good evening. Jeff Wagner, Vice President for Real Estate Development for Third Bank. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Fifth Third is a current business resident of the city of Troy. We have two branches, one over on Rochester Road, the other just down the street here in the Big Beaver corridor. We've had plans for several years to redevelop our site. The, the facility is very obsolete. Circumstances have come together within the last year and a year and a half, such that corporate funding is available, and we're prepared to make our investment. However, the, the recently changed zoning in the Big Beaver corridor whereby the, the accessory use for drive-through was going to be a prohibiting factor and was probably going to not allow us to move forward. We're pleased that the work has been done to reevaluate that provision of the ordinance and consider an amendment to it. The bank is prepared to commence its project, which is basically going to be about a $3 million redevelopment project that would commence later on this year and be completed in the mid-part of 2013. Just want to thank the planning department for their collegial and collaborative efforts. We came to them with a problem, sat down, listened to what they had to say relative to the intent of the ordinance, encouraged us to do our homework, and come back with some creative ideas about how banks could incorporate drive-throughs and still meet the spirit and intent of the original ordinance. And I think working together diligently, we've accomplished that. We feel that the ordinance amendment as proposed allows banks to continue to thrive in the Big Beaver corridor, but allows the Big Beaver corridor, the intent of the ordinance to stay intact and maintain its integrity. So again, want to just thank the council for its consideration of the text amendment tonight. Thank you.
I was actually thinking about the Fifth Third branch on the north side of Big Beaver when I was curious to see how it was going to be configured to be able to accommodate a drive-through feature. It seems like a small parcel of land that you've got.
And that's, that's been the challenge with, with the project, but the result that we have ready and waiting, should the text amendment pass, is basically we are going to satisfy all other aspects of the new ordinance. The building is going to be up at the sidewalk, it's going to have parking that's not going to be interrupted by traffic flow on-site, so the, the integrity of the pedestrian flow to and from the building, from people driving to the site's going to be maintained. The drive-through is going to be segregated, and the traffic to and from it is going to be separate and distinct. So it meets all the criteria that I think the ordinance set out to accomplish, but allows us to incorporate a pretty critical point of service in the drive-through that we don't have today.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. We'll return the item to the council for resolution. Would someone like to move the resolution forward? Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I'll move the suggested resolution as printed.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I just wanted to point out that I was definitely interested in this in light of the changes that we've made to the zoning ordinance, and I can tell that you put a lot of work into trying to allow for a level of consistency for all of the businesses that are on Big Beaver, definitely want to promote people expanding and looking at our city as a possible place for them to come and do business. But I, I really do feel like you've done a good job, everyone that was involved. I know it wasn't just one person, in really trying to make sure that it's a priority, that we're keeping the streetscape in mind, that we are not focusing on the automobile as number one, and making some considerations for pedestrians. So I know that you will have your work cut out for you as businesses come and try to make, make this work for them, but I think it's fair and it, and it keeps all of those interests in mind, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. By the way, welcome, Councilman Teetz.
Thank you.
And we'll now proceed to public comments. As a reminder, I'd like to restate that the audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to council and not to city administration or back to the audience. Also, there's a timer on the city council table in front of the mayor's chair that turns yellow when one minute of speaker time is remaining and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. First on the list is Jeff Wagner. That was the gentleman that spoke. He put his name under public comments as well. John Holton? Good evening, Mr. Holton.
Good evening, Ms. Daniels, council. I'm here because you have the resolution about smart meters on your agenda tonight. I'm here because you have the resolution about smart meters on your agenda tonight, and I have to go ahead and speak. You look behind me, how many people are here to speak about smart meters, and you'll see two. This is, we are warriors for American Revolution. We are going across the state of Michigan to talk about smart meters. And today specifically, I'm going to talk about the gentleman, the audience approached me earlier from Troy. He doesn't know what the big deal about the radio frequency is. I had a young lady from Ann Arbor call him this morning. She wants me to summarize it in three pages so she can hand it on out around Ann Arbor. The bioinitial report is 610 pages about the radio frequencies. You get the Sage Report, 300 and some pages. You've got American Academy of Environmental Medicine. You have Dr. Hirsch, Dr. Deagle, Dr. Carpenter. You have Barry Trower, scientist talks about the dangers of radio frequency. We also have the cost and invasion of your home and the Constitution, Fourth Amendment, loss of privacy. There are so many issues, you cannot get it in three minutes. You cannot get it in three pages to do a justice. You have to make an informed, educated decision. So, I suggest everybody go to our website, wforar.com, the smart meter page, and click on the bioinitial report, the Sage Report, Michigan Attorney General's report, M.P.S.C. report with all the information. Look for yourself. You have to make an educated, informed decision on this. You should not leave it up to a private corporation, utility corporation, DTE, or Consumers Power to make that decision for you. It's your family, your health, your well-being, and we trust our leadership, the mayor and the council members, to make the decision for us because we don't always have the power. The power rests with we, the people, but you are our spokespeople in Lansing and across the country, and we look forward to you to helping us with this here because your voices matter just as much as the people's do. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline Holden?
Pauline Holden, Shelby Township. I became a precinct delegate, as I said, a couple of weeks, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, to make a difference. As you know, John and I have traveled all over talking to people. Every day, my phone rings. The stories that you hear is so upsetting. I don't sleep at night. But I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda for smart meters. We need this for the people. The people should come first. They should have choices. They should have a choice if they're worried about EMF. And EMF is a problem. We were talking with the gentleman here today about it. A lot of people don't understand about radio frequencies and where they can go and the expansion of them, and what can happen. There's so many doctors all over the country that talk about it, and people are getting ill. I know I've talked to you guys weeks about this, but it is a problem. Radio frequencies are a problem. Firemen are getting sick. We had a guy, our chief in Shelby Township, he just died about a month ago. He had something on his arm, and all those antennas on the outside of the fire department? We don't know. Gene Shepard was a great guy. He was 55 years old. Is this going to happen? It could happen. You, me, anybody. Like I say, I had this meter on, and it was on for three weeks. I didn't feel right. I have a rod down my neck, and I'm telling you, I could feel that thing when it read. My friend Phil Brozer was here two weeks ago, and we were here. And we walked through his neighborhood. There were so much radio frequencies all over the place. I got sick. I could barely make it back to the car. I was just so sick. We have to protect the people. If there's any way, always invoke the precautionary principle. Always think about the people first. They deserve that. Always the people, not the corporation. It's very important. The privacy issue is a serious problem. People don't understand that right now, they're making chipped appliances that are going to be coming inside your home now. John talked about the Fourth Amendment. We still have the right to be free in our homes, don't we? We do. But if this happens, we won't be. We will not be. And they do catch on fire. So, we have a lot of areas of concern, the cost too. Are people going to have to decide if they're going to pay their electric bill, or eat, or get their medicine? I think it's coming down to it. I had a young lady, Callen, not a young lady, she's probably just a little bit younger than me, but said that her electric bill was so high, she didn't know what she was going to do. And if she didn't pay it, she's going to be shut down because these meters have little controls, and it can shut you down. So, if you're a day late on your electric bill, are they going to be able to do that because they have this control? We can't let this happen. I hope today that you pass this resolution and join the other 23 cities and townships. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. James Savage? Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I guess I was interested in a lot of things Ms. Hodges had to say, but there was one I noted, and she talked about having advertising in the Santa of where to eat, et cetera. It made me think of the times that I have been on the Detroit People Mover, which was heralded over 20 years ago as a fantastic thing for the city of Detroit. And while I'm sitting there, and I see where to eat, where to stay at hotels, downtown, all the things that are going on downtown, they're all advertised on the stations, and also in the vel cars. But very often, I'm the only one in the car. And I go the whole circuit, and maybe three people get on or off the car. That's 75 cents a ride. That's not going to pay anyhow. It was the transit center I was going to talk about anyhow. Because the recall petition includes the transit center, that leaves it open for discussion. I still don't have the answer to my questions regarding the cost of Troy taxpayers for the transit center. For over three years, the answers from former city manager were invasive double talk, which leads me to believe that there has been a wide range in deception going on for 12 years. Three years ago, Councilwoman McGinnis asked the city manager, why do we not have more information on the transit center? That was nine years after the consent judgment was agreed upon. The transit center will become Troy's Silverdome. Difference is, someone bought the Silverdome, but who will buy a disused train station? When the residents of Troy realize how much this project has cost them up to now, who will be held accountable? So far, so how much has it cost us so far? Is it a half a million, which is a figure that has been bandied around? Is it a million or 2 million? The secrecy continues. We do not know, and we cannot get these answers. And why is the secrecy? The recall supporters have claimed that the transit center will not cost Detroit taxpayers a cent, 100% federally funded. I think we've been conned. Almost every day, we hear about failed projects that end up costing taxpayers millions of dollars. Just last week, we heard about a failed project in Pontiac that would cost the taxpayers over a million dollars to demolish. Anyone who profited from that project should be made to pay back, and any official responsible for the project should be subject to some kind of penalty. Four members of this council voted for the transit center. Did they realize, really know what they were voting for, and why it was kept a secret, even from council members? I think we have, we may have a course for an inquiry into this whole transit center And we will not be done for a long time. And I would still like to get the answers. And here's just one item, and I've brought it up many, many times to the former council, and that was to one consultant in one year, transit center $38,142.50. Was that included in the half million that we've talked about? What was that extra? And if it's extra, how many more extras? What about the other consultants that were paid? When are we going to get some answers into what this transit center has already cost the Troy taxpayers? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Alan Walters? Good evening, Mr. Walters.
How are you doing, Mayor, and City Council members? You have something come up here about no right turns off of 16 mile road during school hours. I talked to your engineer, William Hootery, and he mentioned to me that you only had one sign set up for it. What his was, that he had one, a plan to put one there daily in 16 mile road between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00, and 2:00 to 4:00 during school hours. And I mentioned to him, we also have Heartland to put one because people go up and they circle in, and it's not a school street. He said, yeah, that, we'll put that on there. But then I'm thinking, there needs to be another one on Baker Court and daily on Boyd because if you don't put one on, there are no left turns, and that way, they can, they'll exit on Heartland and daily again, so you're not getting a job done. So, that's another sign they need to be put up, and that way, the traffic will keep going down Boyd, which now Boyd seems like a school street. Let's see. Also on Boyd, or on Torpey Drive, you need a dead-end sign because Torpey deadends to Baker and your middle, and your new IA school, which there isn't a sign there. I don't know if you can put a sign leaving Baker Middle School onto Boyd, same 7:00 to 9:00 and 2:00 to 4:00 to keep the traffic off the street. Which I don't see why you couldn't because I don't know what the hours are that you guys change from 10 minutes to whatever the time is between these two schools starting. So, hopefully, it's at least 45 minutes, I would hope, so that people can use Torpey. And the reason why I say this is because if you come down 16, and you're coming to school, you come up to daily, and the lights are red or green, you can keep going up to 16 because there's no traffic northbound. It's like dead. So, everybody can actually go down the street, make a light, a turn at the light, go north to Torpey and to Boyd now, which is, you know, I think Torpey should be the main road into the school because that's what your school address is, Torpey Drive for both of them. Other than that, that's about it, except we'll see the pavement come soon, I guess. They're going to put some asphalt down, which is nice. Other than that, just the three signs. He had one planned. I told him about the Heartland. He said, yes, it's a good idea. But I didn't bring this one up about Baker Court and daily on, off of Boyd. So, you have to, no left there, through traffic again. But other than that, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Roger Walters?
So, we can beat up on everybody here and stand the right page. Anyways, as he was talking about the turns and everything, again, Ms. Daniels, here's the paper again that was, everybody should have it. I did, that you sent to me. I'm sure you see it. And, Mr. Fleming, your name is on here, or your name isn't on this one, it's on the other one here. He was talking about the turns there. We had, we MapQuest the Troy area on the 16 where it does show that Torpey is a dead-end because when we were kids, we had to smoke beyond the pole, otherwise you were on school property. Troy School District Baker only consists of a square, just like this table, a square. That's it. It actually ends at the road. It doesn't any farther. Torpey is a dead-end street. I emailed the road commission. They said that they would get back with me on it. I did call back to the Board of Education in Lansing, and I did talk and call Bob Higgins. I did talk to Sergeant Saminsky. At about 8:30 at night, he had called me, left a message on my phone. Oh, and a matter of fact, thank you, Mayor Daniels, for calling. I appreciate that. I've been, I've been really sick for the last few days, or actually, last few months. I haven't been able to do too much. I've just been really sick. We won't go into that. But it would be, it would be in all consideration that the signs be put up. And, Mr. Fleming, and that really, you know as well as I do, and I speak to you directly on this, is because you sat on my front porch, you watched the traffic, you watched the drama and trauma. You watched everything there was possible that you can imagine besides my niece getting physically hit on Boyd Street by one of the school attendees, and kid driving across people's property, hitting mailboxes, eating up property damage, and it consistently keeps going on. You know, and I know the school wants to make money and everything, but if that was the case, well, Barbara Fowler, she makes $215,000 a year. If you split that up into 52 weeks, man, you guys all got the wrong job. Every nine of you got the wrong job at that price. I would love to see that, unless you're like me. So, I don't see, when I seen that in the paper too about how they had to dip into the funds, what funds? Somebody making that kind of money? There's no funds. There's plenty of money to do a lot of things with. And I don't think the signs would be too bad. That would alleviate traffic. Oh, I do need to ask you one huge, big, giant, fat favor. Take the dead-end sign and move it past that driveway into Baker is because continuously people are going down at the very end of the street where the impaired child is, Austin. And she keeps having problems with people continuously going down the street because once they, once they get up to the driveway entrance, because Torpey's a dead-end because it has no name. It's just a driveway, and there's nothing there. So, and as well as anybody else knows, that it would be nice if the sign could just be moved. I would say, I don't know, 20 yards, that would save a lot. You've got two signs that are really in the wrong place. I mean, it's just, if you like, put them at your door here when the dead-end signs, not when the dead-end's over here, when it should be here, not there. By the time you find out, oh, you're already at the dead-end. It's too late. So, it's continuous. It's just a continuous problem. And the signs would alleviate the buses, alleviate the problems. So, it'd be like Sergeant Saminsky always calling me, or me talking to the chief, or me talking to Ms. Campbell, you know, it just, you know, or we know Officer Shalnik, we know he's leaving. You know, a lot of things can change. It doesn't take much to make a change. And I think by putting the signs there from like you had stated, like you put the signs in front of my house, okay, I bit it, I ate it, I still been eating it. The signs are still there. I still, everybody still parks there, even though there isn't no schools because they're not, I don't know whether they're not intelligent enough to realize that the school isn't in there right now or not, but that's here and there. But I think by putting the sign there, running it off there, I think it'll stop a lot of traffic flow through there, and a lot of us calling Sergeant Saminsky, and Ms. Campbell, and Ms. Daniels, and Mr. Teetz, and Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Henderson, and everybody, and trying to get everybody involved into something that consists of a sign. That's all, consists of a sign. We didn't ask Ms. Fowler to take out any over $215,000 for a sign, so she can keep the money since we paid for it all. I think it just would be appropriate to all the people who live in it here, including me, and my niece, who got assaulted by somebody coming from the school, and a few other kids, and to Becky from your engineering department. I don't think she was very nice to me on the phone here the other day when I talked to her about them building.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Would you and your brother like to put that in email form? Let me know all of the various locations, and I can forward it to the City Manager.
Yeah, I do because they don't have a fence around the new home that they're building.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Gordon Shevki?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be up here tonight. I just wanted to say a few words. I've been in and out of town, so I haven't listened to all the council meetings. I caught a few of them where I was getting a little bit of flack. But I'll tell you, this is a great city. The City of Troy is a great city. What makes it a great city is when we all start working together. So, I'm excited to have a new city manager in with our new mayor, Janice Daniels. With the two of them working together, we can bring this city up to where it should be. Right now, there's all kinds of exciting things happening on the Planning Commission, all kinds of new businesses coming to town. Property values on the streets are selling for above asking price. In fact, there's bidding wars on a lot of them. So, I think a lot of things are really picking up in the city. But what we need to do is, as- But what we need to do is, as residents, both the big spenders that have caused a lot of this uproar in trying to get our mayor recalled because it's the most idiotic thing I ever heard of, because somebody didn't vote a certain way, but they voted the way they promised that they're going to be recalled. I think that that is absolutely incredible. That's not the way the United States of America should operate, but it tends to be things like that happening in today's world. But this is, a lot of this recall has been a lot of politics. It's been strictly politics, and I think that we have to get rid of some of this nonsense. We've got to start working together. We've got to start building the strong community that we all want, that we all need and we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shevki. Cynthia Wilshire?
Good evening.
Good evening. I came tonight just to see what was going on, not much I knew was going on, but a lot of happy news tonight, and only one complainer that brings up the negative here. I heard on TV today that the Dearborn train station was being given $6 million for upkeep and improvements. I think that's a lot of money for upkeeps and improvements. And when I heard Ms. Hodges say that they may come in and support taking care of ours, I thought that was great. Maybe we can get $6 million from them, too. Also, I heard on the news today that DDOT and SMART have gotten a lot of money for new buses. Maybe that will encourage more people to take buses, and they can do new routes to service people that badly need buses, because they've taken a lot of that away. So that's a happy thing. Mr. Teetz, your idea of having people that are speaking on agenda items first is super. I was really surprised to hear somebody finally got around to saying that and keeping all the naysayers and the crabbies till the end of the meeting, so that they can't say their crabby things and then get up and leave right away without even listening to the reasoning behind things when you have council comment. So now if they're going to be crabby, they've got to wait till the end of the meeting to say they're crabbies. And Mr. Savage wants to know the cost of the upkeep on the train station? That's hard to say. It doesn't exist. How do you know something's, what something's going to cost you to take care of if it's not there yet? An example is you're buying a new house, or you're, you're buying a new used house. And you go in and everything looks wonderful until you sign the papers, and then you say, oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness, and there's extra upkeep that you didn't plan on. So to try and figure out how much this is going to cost to run the train station is kind of difficult until it's there and up and running. And as far as automat's coming in, they're wonderful. I can remember as a child going to New York with my father on business. He worked for Lincoln Mercury. And when we would go to New York with my father and stay in a fancy hotel right on the park every night, my dad took us to the automat. You put your quarter in and the little door opened because they have all this wonderful food, and you just stand there and look at it. Put your quarter in and the little door comes open, and you take your goodie out. We ended up getting chocolate eclairs every night. That would be a wonderful thing, very nostalgic, and I'm glad to see so many people are now trying to work together to make the things that are going on in this, in this city a success. That's what we need, more togetherness, not separation, not the crabbies. I saw Yoko Ono the other day, and she would like everybody in the United States and in the world to post a smiling picture of themselves on a website so that everyone can be happy and maybe we can eliminate war. It's kind of goofy, but think about it. If we all smile, nobody will have the crabbies. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, folks in Troy. I really don't have too much to say tonight. I would hope that they have maybe some alternative, or with that, being a vegetarian, maybe they have something like that, a restaurant or something like that over there. I want to talk tonight about something I think's affecting everybody is the Second Amendment, the shooting in, over in Colorado over the weekend. I think, you know, somehow the Second Amendment gets this, I don't know how you'd say it, infallible view of the Constitution that it's above every other amendment. It has no restrictions on it and everything else. And I find that really hard to believe, hard to follow. It's better than the First Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Fifth, 10th, Fifth, you know, all of them have modifications, but somehow the Second Amendment isn't allowed to have that. And I just, and, you know, following patterns, and, you know, I found, when I crime, I think of patterns, and I've noticed since the Supreme Court, I don't want to bash them, but since they made this ruling that there's been more police and more of these acts of killing, you know, than we've had in the past. And I, I know we've had killings in the past, like bombings and things like that, but as a consistent way of doing stuff, it seems to me that this has got to stop. Because this, this reminds me of, you know, like Tommy guns back in the Depression. We didn't have Tommy guns. We don't allow people to have bazookas in their backyard and stuff like that. You know, and this is ridiculous. How can a guy get the M47 or whatever it is, and is allowed to shoot up a theater, and his, that thing jammed? It's actually jammed. And I, it just boggles my mind how these people are allowed to get a hold of this stuff. So I would like to hope that, you know, the folks in Troy would at least write to the congressman and give him, speak up about that, and hopefully, you know, some action can be made on that issue. Also, on the Art Building, if it doesn't go through, maybe the tri-counties could take a look at it, and maybe even the federal government, quote unquote, might be able to take a look at that as well. And other than that, I think that's about it, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Well, Ms. Daniels, you've always been very vocal in your opinions, which is fine. However, many of us are getting very mixed messages from you. Fed Up USA, in its endorsement of you for mayor, said that you recently helped expose Troy City Council's mismanagement and misuse of city funds. When I asked the organization how they confirmed that the statement was true, I was told, we asked Janice. Ms. Daniels, I'd like your response during council comments as to your proof to substantiate the claim. You also made numerous comments about money being available for certain projects. Ms. Daniels, now that you've actually worked on the budget, I'd like to hear where and how much that money is. You say you're a Christian, yet you took the word "so help me God" out of the oath. Most recently, you made numerous statements regarding the so-called gay lifestyle. I sent you an email suggesting some reading material and/or a movie to watch to understand acceptance, but I didn't hear back from you. So here's some food for thought. Did you ever think that maybe some people are born gay as God's way of awakening others to differences in people and learning acceptance? How would you feel if your son came to you and said they were gay? Would you consider them perverted and wicked? I would hope as a parent you would have unconditional love and want them to lead a full and happy life. If you feel gays are unacceptable, do you also feel those with physical and mental challenges fall into the same category because they were made different? What about a child that doesn't meet educational standards and needs to be held back in school? Is that child also different? Just because someone does not fit your perceived ideal does not mean they should be cast off or made victims of bigotry. In my opinion, God made all of us and wants what's best for us. He wants us to lead lives of self-respect and to respect others. He's an all-encompassing God, and He loves all. It is also not our place to judge. We should be accepting of our fellow man and strive to work together. Each of us is here, each of us is different in one way or another. Some differences are more apparent. However, no one should be subjected to abuse just because they differ from another. In a recent talk at a Tea Party event, you indicated your son is fighting in the military to save us all from Saul Alinsky-trained radicals, referring to the group promoting the recall. May I remind you, Ms. Daniels, as a Tea Party member, that Adam Brandon, a spokesperson for the conservative nonprofit organization Freedom Works, which is one of several groups involved in organizing Tea Party protests, says the group gives Alinsky's Rules for Radicals to its top leadership members. A shortened guide called Rules for Patriots, which I'm sure you're familiar with, is distributed to its entire network. In a January 2012 story that appeared in the Wall Street Journal citing the organization's tactic of sending activists to town hall meetings, Brandon explained, quote, "His Alinsky, his Alinsky's tactics when it comes to grassroots organizing are incredibly effective," end quote. Ms. Daniels, I thank your son for his military service. However, I doubt Saul Alinsky is mentioned anywhere in the documents as a reason for us being at war or for joining the service. How dare you use the men and women who serve our country so bravely for your own political gains? That is appalling. You refer to the recall as undemocratic. How can you say that when the recall process is written into state law? You also mentioned in question about the recall that you're a proponent of small government and that the big government proponents have smeared you in historic proportions. Since you, again, Ms. Daniels, campaigned on transparency, I'd like to know exactly what proof you have of this. Everything I have heard and then researched backs up all the allegations for your recall and then some. Ms. Daniels, you need to resign. Also, do people not listen to others that speak at this podium? Ms. Hodges was here to update Council on the costs for the Transit Center. This is one of the biggest problems we have in this city. People keep ranting and never listen. Also, the recall is not about politics, it's about accountability.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaima. That concludes the people who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Hi, if you want to approach the podium, Lee? I'm sure I can't pronounce your name correctly. If you'll announce your name, please.
Mayor and Council, my name is Lee Kokenderfer. I've lived in Troy for about 15 years. I just, just like to say that I feel that the recall effort is very politically motivated. I don't see any justification, I don't see anything criminal in this recall effort. Yes, they have the numbers in order to force a recall, and that's fine, but I don't see any justifications for it. Secondly, I'd like to say that, and they're using media tactics that are sort of, something that's sort of common, it's to repeat the same thing time and time and time again so that hopefully some people give up and try and say, okay, I'll accept your position, not because they agree with that, but they're just tired of the noise. And, and, and this, and of course, they're, they're used, these comments are used to undermine support for you, particularly to fool the unknowing so, and to lead them to make a decision that would be really not wise. And I, last, thirdly, I'd like to say, or even correct, next I'd like to say is that I think this is really not about you. This is really about an effort to undermine the, the election for voters who wanted you to maintain a certain style of, of political program that they wanted. And so I see this as, it's really trying to overturn that election. And you're, and whatever weaknesses or imperfections that you may have, and I'm sure that they have some too, they're just using them in order to defeat the political program that you're trying to, that you've been elected to implement. So to me, this whole thing is a big disservice, but we've got to go through it, and I hope that Detroit will be stronger for it in the end, that they'll be able to look at the issues, examine them, understand them, and separate that this is really about politics, it's not about criminality, lack of character, what, nobody's perfect. But this is, but this whole thing, this recall effort, to me, is just a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Would Council like to take a short break? Or should we just go forward? I'm okay with just going forward. Next will be response and reply to public comments. Councilman Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Savage has approached this microphone on several occasions, even prior, prior years, requesting, I think, openness and full disclosure regarding the costs of the Transit Center to the Troy taxpayers. And I think in the spirit of full disclosure and openness, I would like to ask that this Council support me and ask the management to provide those costs to the council and to the public. It's not cost going forward, I think Mr. Savage is specifically asking for what we, if we paid consultants, if we paid anyone, what our out-of-pocket costs have been. I don't know where the number half a million comes from. I don't know where that originated, but he quoted that. But I would just like to ask if Council would support me in that, that if we need to do a resolution, we can later. But I would just like to see that, to get that off the table, because it comes up time and time again, and we have nothing to hide. I don't think this Council's trying to hide anything. I don't think our city manager's trying to hide anything. So let's lay it out. What out-of-pocket expenses has the city of Troy incurred relative to the Transit Center since day one? I don't think there's anything to hide. I'd like to get it off the table.
Mr. Culpepper?
Is this, is that the wish of the Council then, to do that?
Mr. Nunn?
I think so. Councilman Slater?
My recollection is that this has been asked and answered more times than I can even think. And maybe Mr. Miller can, can help me out there, but this, this goes back, this project goes back 10 years, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there were some, some initial costs many years ago, but I think this question's been asked and answered several times.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Savage must have missed the memorandum that went to City Council in April of 2011.
And I happened to pull it up, and the, the out-of-pocket cost that the city has expended, less all grants, was $365,765. We have, I mean, if Council so desires, we, we did prepare a summary, Stephen, that the city engineer did, on April 2011. And since that time, we have not expended any city dollars.
Mayor, that's my recollection. I don't know how many times this Council has to ask for something that's already, that was supplied in 2011. I recall Mr. Savage having a discussion with city management over those numbers. To me, this is just attempts to stir up and continue something going forward. That, that was supplied to us in 2011. If Mr. Savage would like to see it again, I don't see any problem in that, but I think it's time to move on. This project is a benefit to this city. It's going to be a benefit to this city. That question's been asked and answered, and I'm not in favor of doing it again and subjecting our staff to that.
Mr. Culpepper?
Madam Mayor, it, it's no difficulty in, in reviving that document as well as we can maybe clarify or put a few extra details to help understanding of that document. If Mr. Savage would call my office tomorrow, we'll set up a schedule, have him look at that, and I would supply that information once again to Council as well.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Councilman Teetz?
I apologize because I probably should have asked Michelle Hodges when she was here, but I'm sure the staff could help me. Has it always been called, or will be called, the Troy Birmingham Transit Center? Because for a while, I thought it was called the Troy Transit Center. And to me, it's an important issue because the citizens of Troy will be liable for the expense of this Transit Center. And the argument she made of, well, Birmingham and is a, is a, she didn't say better, but is a wonderful place, we can, we latch on to that, that, that's a little off-putting. And then the, the second point is, well, it's close by, so it helps geographic proximity. Well, we could call it the Royal Oak Transit Center and the Birmingham, and we could call it the West Blue, or Bluefield. And for that matter, our airport should be called the Birmingham Troy Airport. And so I guess I'm, you know, it's, it's our Transit Center, and for crying out loud, And so I guess I'm, you know, it's, it's our Transit Center, and for crying out loud, since we're going to have to pay for it, or have the liability to pay for it, I don't understand why we would, you know, call it anything else.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, that was kind of my intent in bringing that up, and I wasn't sure what to do next with that, but when we were campaigning, or when whoever was campaigning to have us move forward with the Troy Multimodal Transit Center, it was called the Troy Multimodal Transit Center. This is the first time I've seen a reference of the Troy Birmingham Transit Center, and I, you know, I don't want to pick nits here, but they backed out of it. Birmingham firmly backed out of the program because of a lack of property or whatever the excuse was, and we ended up shouldering all of the burden of construction and management and voting and putting our names on the line for, for whatever purposes. I don't agree with the, with the sharing of the names, so, go on record.
Okay. That concludes, oh, Councilman Slater?
Maybe Mr. Miller can help us out with that, but I do want to take, take issue with saying that the Troy citizens are going to be responsible for, for paying for this Transit Center. That, that is not the case, and we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we don't pay one penny out-of-pocket for the Transit Center. But maybe Mr. Miller could, could help us out with that, that name issue there.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of Council, the, the name of the project officially, the way that it was funded, was the Troy Birmingham Intermodal Transit Facility. There, and technically, the loading platform in all of the bridge is in the city of Birmingham. We will double-check with how the environmental statement and the funding came forward and see if the Birmingham name was taken out. I'm not sure, but from the beginning, it was called Troy Birmingham Intermodal Transit Facility.
Councilman Fleming?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall specifically having a conversation with Mr. Zurlag, prior city manager, and in the artist's rendering, I think he had some input into that, and as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, it was Troy, not Troy Birmingham, that's on the bridge, on the artist's rendering going over, because he said, "This is a Troy project." Birmingham did back out of it, even though the platform's on their side. And as far as ongoing expenses, it is up to Troy to cover those operating expenses, not the federal money we got, but ongoing operating expenses. It's up to Troy. If Amtrak does not step up, if the chamber does not come through, that burden falls on Troy. So I'm in favor of keeping it Troy, but correct me if I'm wrong, I don't recall seeing Troy Birmingham Transit Center on the artist's rendering, but I, I saw several versions of that, and I know Mr. Zurlag was pretty adamant about having that Troy, a welcome to Troy, on the bridge there.
Just if I could?
Councilman Slater?
I, I think you're right. I saw, I saw those drawings also, and my recollection is, we made an offer to Birmingham to, for, to help with the O and E costs, to see if they would pay for the naming, and they declined that also. So, I don't have any problem with the word Troy being on there myself, but I do recall that from the onset, that it was called the Troy Birmingham Transit Center. But I think Mr. Miller wants to, to say something else, but...
I, to clarify, I think that was Mr. Zurlag's intent to go to Birmingham and ask them...
That's true.
To, he had not gone to the city of Birmingham and asked them to contribute money towards the O and M costs. That had not occurred yet, but that was, I agree with you, Mr. Zurlag did say that to me on a number of occasions, he wanted to go to the city of Birmingham and take a piece of tape and take, say, for X amount of dollars, shh, you get your name. That was his game plan.
That's, that's true. So, maybe we could just get a little update on, I think we're all here very proud of the name Troy, and, you know, Birmingham, it might be a marketing issue, but I think we're all proud of the name Troy.
We could move on to regular business now. We have no mayoral appointments, no city council appointments. Councilman Teetz?
There was no resolution on, on the issue. I guess, what are, what are next steps on, on this issue, or do we, is it just stuck as is? And I, I guess that's, that's the question mark I'm, I'm left with.
What is the legal name of the, of the center?
I personally can't answer the question about the legal name. I do believe that Ms. Hodges' point of view was very much in tune with the marketing scheme, and as you could tell, that she was doing a lot of brainstorming and being creative with a lot of the, the ideas. The, we can pursue, it apparently is a very strong sentiment of the Council here, and we will pursue the concept of being very specific on that, that it is a Troy Intermodal Transit Center.
Mrs. Blum, will you find out what it's legally called?
Mayor, I can tell you that the, the grant and the qualification for the grant, it lists it as both names, both cities, the communities, for the eligibility for the federal grant. There are many layers that we would have to investigate, and I can't, we can't give you an answer right here, right now, and so certainly, we will be happy to look at that, to see if it is possible to have it just be Troy without jeopardizing the federal funding that we're getting.
Okay, sounds fair. Councilman Slater?
Maybe we could get that in the next report that we get next month, that would be okay for me, but, and also, we're also exploring getting some funding for naming of the center, so, there, we must have the ability to have some control over the naming, because we are looking to, to get a sponsor's name also, so, I think they're all good points, and maybe we could just get it, get an update next meeting on that.
Sounds good. Now we'll move on to regular business. There are no mayoral appointments, no city council appointments, there are no mayoral nominations, so we'll move on to the city council nominations. Mayor Proton, you have the floor.
Tonight, I would like to move two names into nomination. They are both under the Parks and Recreation Board. I would like to nominate Gary Hoff as a Troy School Board member for a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, and I would also like to nominate Aditya Yalamanchi as a student representative to the Parks and Recreation Board, term expiring seven thirty-one, two thousand thirteen.
Second, moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Mayor Proton McGinnis, did you want to postpone the Historic District Commission nominations?
Uh, yes.
Okay. There are no requests for closed sessions, so we'll move to the agenda items. I four is a smart meter revised resolution. Would someone like to move that resolution forward?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
You spoke first, go ahead.
I didn't hear anybody say anything.
Yeah. Councilman Slater? Did you?
I'd like to, to read the resolution, and I'm okay with the resolution as printed, so, maybe I should, maybe I, I should read it. Whereas Detroit Edison Company, Consumers Energy Company, and other energy providers have deployed smart meters in Troy, and whereas the Michigan Public Service Commission, MPSC, opened a case on January twelfth, two thousand twelve, case U seventeen thousand, and directed electric utility companies to provide information on whether the electric utility intends to allow customers to opt out of having a smart meter, and if so, how does the utility intend to recover the cost of an opt-out program? And whereas the MPSC's order also issued a temporary moratorium on any new installations of smart meters until further order, and whereas House Bill fifty-four eleven has been introduced in Michigan Legislature, which would codify the rights of consumers, or customers, to decline the installation of a smart meter, or ask to have an installed smart meter removed, and whereas Michigan Attorney General Bill Shute filed comments in MPSC case U seventeen thousand on April sixteen, two thousand twelve, in his comments, excuse me, he strongly advocated that customers should be afforded a meaningful and fair opportunity to opt out of smart meter installation without being penalized by unwarranted and excessive costs, and whereas there has been concern expressed by some electric customers that the smart meters are overly intrusive into their energy usage, and, whereas some electric customers have alleged that emissions from the smart meters are actually dangerous to their health. Now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council supports the ability of customers to opt out of a smart meter program on their homes. Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council agrees with Attorney General Shute that utility customers who opt out of smart meter programs should be able to opt out without being penalized by unwarranted and excessive costs. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council supports House Bill fifty-four eleven to the extent that it legislatively mandates a smart meter opt-out provision, and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to Governor Snyder, the Oakland County delegation of the Michigan Legislative, Legislature, the Michigan Attorney General, the Michigan Public Service Commission, the Michigan Association of Counties, and the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and all elected officials representing the city of Troy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have I five. Under the city manager's search, we have items A, B, and C. The approval of the city of Troy profile for the position of city manager that was discussed and decided upon at the last study session. Item B, call for a special meeting, closed session regarding finalists, and item C, a call for a special meeting, interviews of finalists. I'd like to move these three items forward as written, unless there's discussion, or unless there's a reason to break one out.
Could we pull B out, please?
All right. Then we can move items A and C forward as written. Do I have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Mayor Proton McGinnis. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item B, Councilman Teetz?
Yes, I would humbly ask if the city council could meet at four o'clock that afternoon, rather than five o'clock. Pardon me?
Attorney Blum?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, this is actually set for Wednesday, this is what's on here, so that is a change from some of the discussions that I had with you earlier, and I, I know that there was some discussion about having it on Thursday, but Wednesday, hopefully, will, will work better, so this is proposed for Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
And did you still wish to have it moved to?
Nope. I moved the resolution as written.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Teetz, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
I'm a little confused here. In reading the detail today, I think we just approved C, but the interview of the finalists, the one thing that I have a concern about, and I don't know if it's part of the resolution or not, but I'll, so before we get off this subject, I'm going to bring it up, even though it really applies more to C than B, so I'm a little bit of out of order, and I apologize for that, but I'm not in favor of having an outside firm approve to interview these candidates for the Council. I want the Council to do the interviewing, and I, I'm not sure it's part of the resolution, but it was in the documentation there, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that, that the Council is not giving up the right, the process to interview these, these finalists.
Attorney Blum?
Mayor, no, that, that's not part of this at all, and certainly, I'm, I'm anxious to obtain your input on that, on, on the process and everything. I will tell you that I did talk with that firm today, and they are still able to accommodate and to do the testing, even with the very tight timeframe that, that we have, and I believe that there was consensus to proceed with the testing part of it. I just, I, my sense was that there wasn't consensus to proceed with having them on the interviewing panel.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, good.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes our regular business. We now move to consent agenda items. Does anyone have an item that they'd like removed for discussion? Councilman Henderson?
I supported the J four B out, I'd like to talk about after.
J four B, okay. All other items? Would someone like to move the resolution forward? Councilman Slater?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item J four B, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Proton McGinnis. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.